We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, November the 16th, 2023. We'll have our invocation by the Reverend Dr. Francisco Artley, Poseyville United Methodist Church. And after that, I'll ask Councilmember Estes if you don't mind leading us in the Pledge Allegiance. Thank you so much. Please stand for the invocation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Congratulations on your reelection and all those that were reelected. I pray for blessings and a productive four years. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just pray that you rain your blessings down on our city council and our mayor, Lord, that you are with them, that you give them the wisdom, the guidance, and the strength to do the business for the city, and that the decisions they make are the best for our city. And I just pray blessings on them. And I pray blessings on those that have come, and that I ask, Lord, that as a city, as citizens, that we can come together and work together to make this a better place. And we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We appreciate you leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Artley, thank you so much for the invocation. Oh, I apologize, Mr. Estes. I'm used to saying that. Thank you, Councilman Estes.
Who said nothing good came out of Katrina?
Exactly. That's right. Ooh, wee. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council. My name is Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a work session where agenda items will be presented for discussion only, and no official action will be taken on these items tonight, but they will be taken next Monday. The items that will discuss tonight will be voted on next Monday at 6:00 PM. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates section for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few of the rules and protocol, and then we'll get to the meat of the meeting. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair, and if you deviate from that warning, a second deviation will have the microphone turned off, and you will not be able to continue to have a discussion with us. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers, or speak from the audience, or cheer, or carry on a conversation when you're at the podium. Please direct all your information to the committee chairperson. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you will please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. The agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read the agenda items, and that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and councilmembers will possibly ask questions to help us to have a better understanding to make decisions on those items next Monday. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There's a 20-minute maximum for those in favor of the item, and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. Prior to coming to the podium, we ask that you would please fill out a speaker card. There are green cards outside on the table. Put your name and address on those cards. Hand those to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker to my right, and please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Each person has one opportunity to speak, and this is not a question-and-answer format or debate as far as the conversation going back and forth. We're just here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions next week. If you have anything that's printed that you need to give to myself and councilmembers, please give it to our city clerk. She'll make copies and pass those copies out to us so that we can have that to help make our consideration for the vote next week. All right. So now we will follow the agenda. There is a copy on the screen, and/or you can choose a paper agenda outside. We'll move on with the agenda as presented and printed, and I will, since we have some members that are at a conference, we'll go to vice chairs or committee members if they're not here. So our first, we don't have any announcements and presentations, and so for Economic Development Committee, the vice chair is Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have one item this evening for economic development, and that is to appoint Ms. Glennis Tillman to serve as the post one member of the Douglasville Downtown Development Authority to an unexpired term expiring March 22 of 2026. We've got Ms. Jackson here to talk to us about that.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street, Deputy City Manager. As Councilwoman Miller stated, Ms. Glennis Tillman would like to be appointed to the post one position for the Douglasville Downtown Development Authority. This term would expire March 22, 2026. Myself and Councilwoman Miller interviewed Ms. Glennis about two months ago. It's been a couple of months, of course. We left it open to see if anybody else would like to serve in that position. Currently, no one else is interested in serving, and so Ms. Glennis Tillman, she's the only individual who would like to be appointed at this time.
So, thank you for that, Ms. Jackson. Did any of you have any questions about Ms. Tillman or this?
Just glad people are willing to serve.
Yes, isn't that the truth? Well, what is the pleasure of council? I know it's not my committee, but we also asked the head shaking. Are you guys okay with going ahead and placing this on the consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Perfect. All right. Well, then, let's go ahead and place that on the consent agenda, please, Ms. Jackson. And that is all that we have for economic development tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair, and thank you, Ms. Jackson, for bringing that information. We'll move on to the next committee, which is Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have several items tonight to discuss.
Yes, sir.
Under Finance. Authorize the mayor to sign a change order number 18 under the agreement for construction of the Town Green with Ray Lynn and Associates Incorporated for additional sanitary sewer line testing. Mr. Marcus Thompson is going to help us with that. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Just want to congratulate you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilman Estes and Councilman Watts.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
For the reelection. So basically, the item before you tonight is simply a housekeeping item. It's basically in regards to a final acceptance from WSA for infrastructure that we installed along Church Street. I have CPS here, Jacob. He can explain the item a little bit better than I can, so I defer to Jacob.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Adams, 4150 Ashford Dunwoodie Road. Councilor and Mayor, thank you guys for having us here tonight. I want to start off our presentation with saying, "Go Dogs." I was told that our company had represented the wrong collegiate team for a while, so I want to, because it's my first time presenting to you all.
We're going to leave that alone.
I'd like to leave a good first impression.
Hire that guy. Hire that guy.
I can just walk away now, right, without presenting?
Oh, my gosh.
I'm paying tuition there.
You're paying tuition. I know, that's right.
So yes, if you could please open the PowerPoint, the link associated.
They can see it? Okay. So he'll just talk through it.
Okay. Perfect. So yeah, as you can all see, we're here tonight to talk about PCO 18, which is the retest of the new sewer line that we installed on site. As you can see on Slide 2, the second slide past the title slide, it will show you a highlighted line that goes from Church Street through the site. That was the existing site that was installed when we took over the site to begin construction. The original intent and plan was to keep that existing line serviced through the duration of construction as we completed site work, and then to install the new sewer line once prompted in the schedule and sequenced correctly with our site work. Once we began construction on the site work, we had found that there was some embedded rock in the foundation, as well as some conflicts with the amphitheater stage, as you will see directed on the PowerPoint slide. There was some rock blessing that would need to occur for us to get into the foundation, and therefore, we were not able to remove the existing sewer line. Or, excuse me, we had to remove the existing sewer line in order to complete that work done on the site. So in order to do that, we had to move ahead in our sequencing and install the new sewer line that you see on the last slide that would run from Church Street down to the site, the same connection point that the existing was originally at, and then go and remove the existing sewer line and begin our site work that was associated with that. In order to do so, that required a temporary approval from WSA to test the sewer line, install it, and then service it as operational before we could begin work to remove the existing sewer line, begin our site work. So to do so, we did just that. We installed the new sewer line, we tested it, we serviced it, and made it operational for the site, and then went back in, removed the existing line, and began with our site work that was needed. As you will also see, where the change order occurs tonight is the roadways that run that overlap where the new sewer line is along with Church Street. In order to, in order to complete the site work, it required, we were obviously required to perform all of our roadway activities and work, so curb and gutter, milling, paving, et cetera, on the Church Street roadway, as well as roadway in the site. Following WSA's requirements, it stated that any potential interference with the new sewer line would require retesting all the way through to ensure that there's no conflicts that occurred with the sewer line. So that's what we did. We followed WSA's requirements, which stated full testing and servicing of that line to ensure that no conflicts occurred. So we stopped at the connection point, we stopped sewage, we pumped the line, we vacuumed the line, we ran WSA's cameras, the whole nine yards, and you'll see that's broken out in the change order as well, to ensure that no conflicts occurred with the new sewer line. We did that. The testing came back, it was confirmed, it was positive, and therefore, we also got permit approval to use that sewer line for the site. So that's what the PCO calls includes tonight, is the retesting required and needed per the site work that was done for the new sewer line.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Great job.
Thank you.
Great explanation. I'll ask a couple of questions, and then I'll open it up for council. Basically, and probably, I don't know, either Mr. Thompson or Mr. Morrow can answer this because I understand Mr. Adams has just become a part of the team, so he may not have any information of this, but we were basically dependent upon as-built from the 1980s, I would imagine, in the old sewer line location when we bought the property from the county. Is that correct? And so had we had better information, which I'm not blaming the county for, but had we had more accurate information as to where that sewer line was, could we not have potentially designed it differently to begin with where we didn't have this to come into play?
So, yes, I think it's accurate that the as-built information came from the county from, you know, handwritten documents.
Sure.
Many, many years ago. I think the greater challenge to designing it differently may have been possible, but the rock that we ran into, I think, really is what caused the challenge. The rock ended up interfering with the foundation of the stage itself, and as a result, also interfered with the, our ability to be able to remove it, caused the sewer line, the sewer line was in the way. We needed to get that out of the way so we could get to the rock and get it out of the way. You couldn't blast the rock out of the way with the sewer line where it was, you would have just blown up the sewer line.
Correct.
So it was a myriad of sort of things that came together, all in that one location at the sort of back corner of the stage building that really caused us to have to resequence the entire sort of way that we were going to make the sewer lines operational on the site. So we ran into the rock, we immediately had to divert and come up with another plan, which caused us to have to put the new sewer line in service much earlier than we anticipated.
And while this is not something that we like or that we were looking forward to, I think we could all recall when we made that purchase and began talking about it, that there were going to be things that we weren't going to be in control of that were unknowns, and we would just have to cross that bridge as we got to it and make it work. And that's basically what your team has done.
Yeah. This is the epitome of an unforeseen site condition, right? You ran into something that you just, there really wasn't an alternative way to solve it without, you know, completely stopping. The alternative was kind of what we came up with, was the alternative plan, put the new sewer line in service, test it, and get it going, even though we had a whole bunch of more work to do right over the top of it. It made sense so that we had and we could continue on with the site work and get the buildings built.
From a logistics standpoint, everyone will be able to realize this, is that for the last several months, you've been driving up and down Church Street in front of the Newtown Green, and you know how rough the road has been and how covered with plates. That is the line, that's where the new line had to be installed, right down Church Street. So, and we've been driving on it, they've been working on it for several months, and so that, I mean, that's just an unintended consequence. There's not a lot we could do about it. That's the regulation. We would not in any way want to.
And on top of that, right, all of the sewer that comes from here up on here, this flows and now goes through that new pipe that we had, right? So it wasn't as though we could kind of just cap it off and do some work. I mean, all of the sewer that comes from this side of the city flows through that pipe and then makes its way down to the wastewater treatment plant. So it was a, there was stuff there that needed to constantly be flowing, otherwise we would have had bigger problems. So it was coming up with a plan that allowed us to be able to maintain operation of the sewer system while we were having to deal with the rock and the removal of the old sewer pipe.
And it wouldn't have taken long for that problem to rise to this point.
That's exactly right. No, it would not take.
Okay. Questions, comments, anyone? Council? Madam Mayor? Anyone? Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I had a quick question. So, an eight-inch pipe, did you have to expand the pipe? Was it like a covert, or did you, was it corroded, and you had to put a new pipe in it to, for the capacity, or?
So the original pipe, one was going to be in the site. It was old and needed to be replaced anyway, but we were also adding new services that needed to be collected. So the new buildings have bathrooms and stuff that all needed to be collected. So running a new pipe through the site and then collecting all of that and then sending it downstream was why the new pipe had to really be put in, was for the new facility to serve. And it just so happens that we did it all the way from the collection, the point on the site, they took everything from here. So we were now have brand-new pipe from our connection point on Church Street all the way through the site and sending it downstream. So using that old pipe definitely was not an option for a brand-new facility. You did not want to do that.
It just basically had to be done earlier than we wanted to do it.
That's correct.
Because of those conditions.
We had to do the work out of sequence as a result of what we found on the site.
Okay. So I was just saying, did you have to expand the pipe? Was it like a six-inch, and now it's eight-inch, or?
So, you know, I would, so I think it's an eight-inch that goes throughout.
It is an eight-inch.
So it is, but, so that was sized based on everything that was coming down?
Capacity.
And what we were collecting on the site. So the engineers do the calculations to determine what that flow rate is, and then size the pipe accordingly to be able to get it through the site.
I know, because that's expensive.
So that's all calculated out to make sure that we have enough flow in the pipe.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you.
And I understand, Madam Mayor, all of this had to be inspected and approved by Water Sewer Authority. So they would have specified what had to be done as far as material. It would have been installed to their specifications, and then it would have been inspected by their people to make sure that it was up to their code crime.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any others? Coach?
I.
You look like you want to ask a question.
Well, so when the new sewer line was put in, WSA signed off on the temporary use of it, I guess. So y'all had to test it then before you could even do that.
We did.
And then had to repeat the same test. Okay.
That is correct.
Because work had been done over the top.
Over the top of the pipe.
It's also forbade in the same requirements that were done, the temporary ross is done for that permit. So exact same protocol is in place.
Well, if we're looking for anybody to blame, we might blame the founders who built Douglasville on top of a big rock way back in the day, but other than that, it seems like a lot of our issues have been rock.
No.
Or related to it.
Or related to it, yes.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And anytime that you're going back and retro, doing retrofit, not taking a virgin piece of ground and reusing it, revitalizing it, and using it for a different purpose, this is some of the things that can come up that can bite you. I'm impressed that you are blaming the founders for the seeds rather than who I thought you were about to blame, so. Okay. Any other question or comment? I will not ask at this call on the consent agenda for, because of the number of council members that are not here, but I do appreciate it, all of you. Good job. Mr. Adams, I appreciate you jumping on the bandwagon. I didn't ask for that.
I had to shed a good light on our company, and also I'd earned brownie points, I said. First presentation.
Great job. Welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much, folks. We will then take that up on Monday.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to item two. Authorize the mayor to sign a change order, PCO number two, with FS Scarborough LLC for the Hunter Park Walking Trail Improvements Project for the repair of the park's stormwater system in the amount of $106,694.68. Ms. Mann, you going to help us with that?
Yes. Alicia Mann, Project Manager, 6701 Church Street. So during the construction of the new Hunter Park Walking Trail, we ran into a failed stormwater system, and from that, it resulted in sinkholes. The first sinkhole we discovered was right under the walking trail. So we decided to remediate that through the first change order, change order that we got approved, and that just replaced the infrastructure that was already there. So once staff assessed the rest of the damage to the rest of the running pipe, we decided to just completely upgrade the whole entire system. So it resulted in sinkholes across the street and even in the median.
Oh, wow.
And so we went back to the engineer of the project, asked him to design, create a new design for the work, and he gave us back the design, and today we have change order two, which resulted in increasing the pipe size from a 36-inch pipe to a 42-inch so that it can sustain a 100-year flood, also break stormwater structures, as well as head walls and outlets, and to patch over the asphalt that they're going to have to run over there to replace the new system. And I can't answer any questions.
Okay. Ms. Mann, I think I ask this, we met just briefly as a group, just to try to familiarize ourselves with each of these items this afternoon, and Ms. Hampton may be the one I have to ask this of because you were not with us at the time, but is there any information that would help us to know, Ms. Hampton, that this may have been a result of the flooding back in, was it 2009?
I'm not quite certain. Marcus, do you have that information? I don't think so. Mr. Bass or Mr. Thompson, I'm not quite certain that we have that information from 2009. It may have been there, but I don't think it was a part of our reports because this is the first that we were aware of it.
And we were actually reimbursed for a large amount of damage that was done to the park from that, that 500-year flood, I believe you would call it.
That is correct. Yes, sir. We were reimbursed.
But this, this is, it makes sense to go and do the improvement throughout if you found one issue, and there again, I believe the mayor mentioned the enlargement of a pipe. The new engineering requirements caused this to be enlarged as far as storm drain. Questions, comments, anyone? Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Ooh, wee. On 10, 11, and 12, these sinkholes are huge. We missed, I mean, wow. So we missed it. No one complained about this? Where exactly are they in Hunter?
So, the driveway, once you come in, right before you turn left to the tennis courts.
Oh, on the left-hand side.
Yes, so it's running across that street.
Okay. Ooh, wee. Well, yeah, this is, this is a safety hazard as far as environmental as well, so it definitely needs to be done. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Mann. We appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Again, I will not ask for this to be placed on the consent agenda so that our other members can become aware of it when we meet again on Monday. We'll take that up. Thank you all. Item C. Authorize the mayor to sign a fee proposal with Comprehensive Program Services Incorporated, CPS, for a catering kitchen addition at the Douglasville Town Green in the amount of $120,000. Mr. Morrow from CPS and Ms. Chelsea Jackson, our Assistant City Manager, are going to handle that item for us. Good evening, Ms. Jackson.
Good evening, Councilman Adams. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. As you stated, this is to, this is a fee proposal to extend the contract with CPS for in addition to the catering kitchen. As you all know, I'll give a brief background because this does kind of go with item D as well. So currently at the Town Green, you have a concession area, and there's a sole caterer proof of the pudding who operates and basically are the owners of the items in that kitchen. Up on the second and third event levels is an event space, and you, we have a list of five caterers that can provide catering services. On the second and third level, there's no warming kitchen or no area really that a caterer can prep or warm up their items to serve to the guests that will rent out that space. So operation, that functionality does not work well when you have five caterers who basically have to bring their food on-site and, you know, have it already warmed. So staff got with CPS as well as with TSW to design a catering kitchen space for that area to make the functionality very useful, and so that we can have those five caterers that can use that event space on the second and third levels.
Let me make sure that everyone understands, Ms. Jackson, I asked you this earlier, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. This is not something that was value engineered out of this project, correct?
That is correct. It was an add-on. After the three concerts, staff, we made, do with what we had during that time, the caterers there, they did a great job, but just to assist with catering, to make it easier, this was an add-on to assist with that. So this was not in the original project.
And this is the cost of extending the contract with CPS?
Yes, sir.
For the additional months shown for them to oversee the project for us, correct?
That is correct. It's about four months of the design management, and then six months of actual construction and execution and administration.
Do we anticipate, we'll talk about this next, but do we anticipate the length of time it actually taking six months?
No, sir. We anticipate about three to four months, as well as the Town Green is scheduled to open to the public on December 1st, and then it will continue to be open while this is also being produced, the catering kitchen is being produced.
A concern that I had was, and first of all, you all have done a great job, staff has done a great job in giving us the fall series of concerts and testing the facility to see how it has operated, and this is the result of those operations, so that's good. But then we closed it down with fencing in order to do the punch list, I'll call it, and I would, of course, love to have seen us do this during that same time so that when it opens, then it's complete. But we won't actually be allowing catering or rental or usage of it from a commercial standpoint until the spring, correct?
Until July 1st, 2024.
Okay. So this will be ready, if we go forward, this will be ready then before we start up the next series?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions, comments, anyone? Yes, Coach?
When, when we do have a concert or event, city event, is there a specific group, like Proof of the Pudding, or will this allow us to allow caterers in that aren't necessarily tied to the city right now, or?
Yes, sir. So in August, there was, there was a bid that went out to solicit five caterers to be able to cater in that event space. So from there, because we did not have a catering kitchen or a warming kitchen at the time on the second and third levels, we only received two proposals. So currently, we only have two caterers on that list, but we will in January reopen the RFP up to hopefully get three more caterers and let them know that we will have a catering and warming kitchen, so therefore, we'll have more individuals or more businesses that are actually come out and actually submit a bid for that.
That'd be great. I know, you know, we've got a lot of local caterers, and so it'll be an opportunity, I think, so.
Definitely.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Okay. Once again, on item C, thank you very much, Ms. Jackson.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate that presentation. appreciate that presentation. We will move on on Monday with action on that item. Last item, D, authorize the mayor to sign amendment number twelve with Tunnel, Spangler, and Associates, TSW, for design services for the addition of two stories to the west side of the existing event tower at the Douglasville Town Green in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Mr. Steve Morrow is going to help us with that. Mr. Morrow?
Evening, Mayor. Council Steve Morrow, two thousand and five Goldenrod Road, Roswell, Georgia. It's great to be back. Congratulations on your reelections. It's good to see everybody here. So as Councilman Adams sort of walked through, and I think Ms. Jackson gave a great presentation of what the space is trying to become, what I did in the, I think on your agenda is you kind of see a blue box that's kind of now hanging off the west side of the building that's two stories high. That is the space that is going to be added onto the existing building. So you'll see the, you can see some, some metal X-bracing at the bottom, and then there's two stories of space above it. The first story or the, in second floor, will be a full sort of catering kitchen. We've had conversations with the staff, who have reached out also to the local catering community to kind of understand what they would need, the amount of places, the number of boxes that they would need for warming boxes, the prep tables, all of that space to kind of figure out how we would generally lay it out and how much space we would need. And in addition to that, on the second or the third story up, up on the top, there's currently no restroom facility that is available for those that are up on the third floor. You have to come down the stairs and go to the second floor to go to the restroom. So that third story will include an ADA-accessible restroom as well as a storage space. One of the things that I think great for us to kind of figure out as you went through the fall concert series, that you kind of tested out the facility, and we were able to figure out some things that worked and didn't work. And one of the things that I think the staff really figured out is there's no place to put stuff.
Right.
They need places for tables or linens or the stuff that they need to sort of operate the facility when there's an event going on. So that third story is going to have some storage space available for us to be able to put items in there. So what this whole request is about is to be able to bring TSW, who designed the amphitheater, to provide them with a change order, an amendment to their contract to add services, to be able to accomplish the design effort that's going to be required. I should point out very clearly that while I know that the, you've seen the prices for it, it's probably important to show that every single discipline that would be required to design something is going to be required here. So you're going to need a civil engineer, a structural engineer, a mechanical engineer, an electrical engineer, all of those sort of subconsultants for what you would normally have for, let's say, a brand-new full building, even for this space because of what's required or what we're putting in the space and the fact that we're tying it to the existing building. All of those consultancies are going to be required in addition to a kitchen consultant to be able to help us to make sure that we can design that, that warming kitchen to be able to do what it does. So I think a lot of that is what sort of goes into why that, the change order is sort of listed out the way that it is. The most critical part of it right now, though, in order for us to try to get kicked off, is task number one, which is to do a survey of the existing condition, the as-built conditions that we have out there. While we know where everything is, we literally need to take GPS coordinates and surveys of heights and lengths and widths of everything to nail it down so that we can put it into the drawings that we have and get started on building the new space from the ground up. There's also something in there that talks specifically around the grease trap. For those of you that are familiar with any sort of a restaurant capability, we've got that full kitchen down there. Well, the grease trap sort of comes right out underneath the space where we are. So the engineering required to probably have to either relocate that, move it, or do what we're going to need to do to make this happen is also another element of this that is, you know, a little bit different than if you were just doing a standard design on a building. But that kind of lays out what we're, what we're asking for in order to bring TSW on to be able to have those services available and get the design underway.
Okay. So on page six of seven, then you see the total. This is just for design. This is for design, to prepare documentation to be ready to do the work. And I, I know that it is, it seems to be a large sum of money for that to cover three hundred square feet. But the fact that we are reworking parts of it, one being the grease trap, there's no way that the economies of scale are going to work in our favor when we're, when we're going back to do in addition to a, to a brand-new building. But this was not something, again, that was value engineered out of the project. We know that. We just, we've, we know enough about it now. Staff has worked hard to, to learn the system that needs to be there, and this is something that needs to be added. And I, for one, am very much in favor of having that warming kitchen so that we can have those independent catering companies there to, to, so that they'll, they'll be more open to others in the community that may want to rent the space. I want to see us do anything, in my opinion, that will make that, this new addition to our city successful. And I think that's, there's a cost to that. So, so Mr. Morrow, all you really need, and Madam City Manager, I would assume that you would have no problem, we'll vote on this, we'll take a vote on this on Monday, but as far as the different items that have to be done, the only thing really that would, to get the process started in order to hopefully have it done by spring, summer, is that task A or site survey, and you would have no problem, you're authorized to do that without, even without this approval. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And I would just add to Mr. Morrow's point of moving forward to get us to where we need to be for that concert series, that as best as we can move forward, especially since the contractor is still there on-site, we still have the architect engaged. Because if we don't do it now, then we're possibly out of the contract period, and now we have to go through the procurement process all over again, as well as the fact that we may not get the same contractor. So that puts us in a place of having other issues that we have to deal with. So anything that I would be able to do in advance, if you all need a little bit more time, we'll go ahead and move this forward so that we can keep those individuals who we're working with engaged.
I want to make one more comment, and then I'll open the floor. No, go ahead, Coach.
No, I was just, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm just glad that we're talking about everything being done above ground, so we don't have to worry about rock on this, right?
Or a place we've already dug a hole, so we know it's there.
Good. Other comments? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the sentiments that you said about making this facility successful. It has been shown in the community that people are really excited. The citizens are excited, and it was such a great success. And we thank staff and you as well. So I know the warming kitchen is needed because there was one point, and I can't recall if it was Ms. Leanne Rhimes or not, but we had, the food was gone, and they had to go back and get food. And so it was a lag time. And we had gotten more vendors to sign on and sponsors, and we had them upstairs trying to give them the royal treatment, and we had to tell them, hold on for a second, we'll get some more food. They have to run all the way to the conference center to get the food. And so I think we're just identifying, because this is our first time doing something to this magnitude, what we need to, for it to be successful. So I support anything that we can do to make this more successful. Is it in the contingency?
We'll talk about that in just a minute.
Okay.
Yes. Anyone else? So I have three questions, two questions, well, three questions. If we can move forward with this, I want to make sure that we don't have to shut down the Town Green again. In other words, it seems a little wonky that we've opened it for those three concerts, and now we've put a fence around it, and now we're going to open it December first to the public. Are we going to be able to do this work with it open?
We will build into the plan to make sure that we create a safe space around the area that we're working and still allow traffic to flow. We are going to be right up against the, the ring road or the road that goes around. If we need to take one of the two lanes in order to make it safe so that we don't have, we have people working ahead, that we don't have people walking around. But we will build into the plan our ability to be able to make sure that the, the facility maintains its operation while we're working. There will be impacts, obviously, if we need to cut power or do something, but we will plan all of those and make sure that they're done in hours that are not going to affect the public and their use of the facility.
That's important. That's important. Secondly, actually, there were three things, and I'm trying to think of the second because the third one is really going to be a big one. The second thing, Madam City Manager, money. Where, where do we get these funds to do this project?
So if you weren't going to pursue this project, you would leave this project with some funds in contingents, you would have some funds in contingency that would be left over. So essentially, you would have probably just shy of about a half a million dollars left in contingency. So our proposal is you have the cost in front of you for project management services as well as the construction, or I should say, the design services. We're estimating the project itself for construction is going to cost about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you add in all of those things together, basically, we're looking for over a million dollars, a little over a million dollars to do the project. My recommendation is you exhaust all of your contingency first, and then the remainder that you have left, you pull out of park splosh. My recommendation is you definitely do it now, get it done. If not, of course, construction prices go up. If you don't do it, then that money in contingency is just going to roll into general fund for another purpose.
So let's get it done and get it done correctly with the contractor that we already have under contract, with the management team that we already have on, on-site. Okay, good. The thing, Mr. Morrow, that I think we need to hear, and I'll ask the question here I asked you earlier. So this entire project, these, these services that are included here, about two, four, six, eight services for two hundred and two thousand dollars, each of those groups have already given a bid or a proposal to do this. And this is, this is a good number. This is not a wag.
That is, no, that is not a wag. That is the actual cost. So we, we worked quite a bit with staff and TSW to try to understand what level of design effort was going to be required. We went through multiple options of looking at coming out of different sides of the building. Was it one-story, two-story? We went through all of that effort with TSW. They helped us to understand that. And then once we landed on what the, the request was, they went to all of their different consultancy firms and the ones that worked on the Town Green. I think all of them, they're same, will be the same firms that did the design for the, for the Town Green, and actually got proposals from them. And that is what was provided back to us is what the, the costs were going to be.
Okay. So you having, you having said that, then that the, the team basically is still in place?
Yeah. The only one that is changing, and it's only, is, is the civil engineer, which is, is not going to be in any impact for us. It's just going to be a different civil engineer.
So keeping the team together, finishing the project and improving the project, I would just like to see if you could go back, now that we're talking about also extending you to be here on-site with us, and see if you can have them sharpen their pencil leni on that part of it.
I can do that. Yes, sir.
Only because if we're, they've done the huge project, they're about complete, we're doing a punch list. We see that we need something else. We want you to do the project. If we vote for this, give us your best price. Okay?
Will do.
Questions, comments?
Just one quick, I'm assuming, I'm looking at the drawings here, the renderings. Our resident architect's not here tonight, but he'll be able to wait.
He'll be here Monday.
On Monday. But so this, this will blend well. We expect it to blend well with what's already there and not kind of stand out like.
Like a.
Right.
So I, I had this very specific conversation with the architect, actually, when I was on my way over here tonight, and talking about their, their fees and that. And one of the things that they said to me is that part of it is that their intent is to make this very intentional, to not make it look like it's a add-on to the building. And part of that is the effort associated with, well, how do we blend it? How do we make it look like exactly the roof lines, the roof structure? If you notice, the roof lines on the existing building are a little different, right? Because they're sloped a certain way. Making this match or blend with that is going to be an important element of it. So they are very aware that sticking some box on the side of the building is not going to be an acceptable solution.
Yeah. They'll have to deal with Councilman Miller if, if, when he returns on Monday, if, if they, when the time comes. I know, how long before we'll have the actual drawings?
If I can get the survey started immediately, if we're able to do that, I would say within a month or so, we should have something good for us to, to start looking at.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So everyone is on the same page of what we've asked Mr. Morrow to do. And we will take this up on Monday. But basically, our city manager is telling us that she can move forward with those, signing those approvals for those to get started. And we do need to move forward if we're going to do this so that we'll be ready for that next series of concerts. Thank you, Mr. Morrow.
Yes, sir.
Go Dawgs.
Go. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, I will take this up on Monday.
Yes, sir.
For a vote. And that's all that I have under finance. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, staff, Ms. Jackson, and Mr. Morrow, and Mr. Adams. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee. I'll ask Councilman Estes if you mind taking that for me, please.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you. If you leave your microphone on and do Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee as well.
Also, no business in Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Estes. We'll move on then to Personnel Organization Committee, and it's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight, authorize the mayor to sign an application for the Georgia Municipal Association Safety and Liability Management Grant. And Dr. Westfield will bring this to us tonight.
Dr. Brian Westfield, HR Manager, six six nine five Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, three zero one three four. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to extend a heartfelt congratulations to you, Madam Mayor, Councilman Estes, and Coach Watts, on your reelection. I'm here to present information for the 2023 safety grant. Similar to previous years, this grant provides funds to organizations to help improve employee safety and general loss control. This is done through the purchase of either training, equipment, or services. This grant pays up to twenty thousand dollars, with ten thousand dollars being for workers' comp, the other ten thousand dollars being for risk and liability. This year's grant submission was around one hundred and four thousand dollars. Any additional purchases during this calendar year can also be added to that amount. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody, any questions? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you, Dr. Westfield.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have the department where it's allocated to? Are we looking at public safety? Are we looking at maintenance sanitation? Or it's just overall, and you all will plug in where it needs to go?
Great question, Madam Mayor. So what we do is we look at the department to actually provide it receipts. The large preponderance came from PD and also came from Public Services.
Yes, sir.
That was roughly sixty K from the PD and about forty K from Public Services. So there's about four thousand from other departments that we're looking at. Understanding that, of course, we won't get the full reimbursement, a hundred K. We're not going to see that. But we'll take the twenty thousand and do a percentage and give them back that piece.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Westfield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, comments? This question is for Ms. Hampton. Our risk management program, as it is now, does that help at all with costs like every year when we're talking insurance, being a safe, being safe, not having people go, dealing with workers' comp cases and things like that? Does that help us save money in the long run?
So, so you all are a member of the Georgia Risk Management Association pool, so the GERMIA board that I serve on. Part of the reason we're able to receive the grant is because we are a member of GERMIA. Of course, GERMIA is an investment pool for all members, city, all municipal governments that participate in that investment pool. There are different things that are unique as to being a member of GERMIA, such as they do provide the safety grants. They do provide training that Dr. Westfield goes out, whether it be driver safety, whether it be looking at equipment. They also send us out an assessment. I think they do it, do they do it quarterly or annually when they come out and see certain things that we're doing on the job? So there's just things that are unique to local governments that we participate in. And overall, our rates actually have been favorable. I would share with you, there've been times throughout the years where elected officials have asked us to negotiate out those services to other private companies. But I, I can share with you, as serving as a member of that board, most local governments that leave GERMIA and they get those favorable rates in the beginning, end up coming back in the next two years. Because you get the introductory rates, and you're off on your own, and you end up having to pay claims that are skyrocketing. And I'll give you an example. If, right now, all of the storms that are, that have hit the coast of Georgia, you all are not feeling the impact of what's happening there because of what is, because of being in that municipal pool, and the investment pool helps to reduce those costs. The other thing that, being a member of the risk management pool as well, and definitely on the liability side, some of you have seen some of these jury claims that are out. The city of Milton just recently got hit with a thirty-five million dollar claim.
Wow.
Because there was a young student who was returning home from Yale University, and the local government had a planter that was on the side of the road that had been there for sixty or seventy years. The student, for whatever reason, no one knows, ran off the road and hit the planter and died. So the family sued and was awarded the thirty-five million dollars, and the city of Milton is having to fight that claim. GERMIA will work to fight the claim, and the investment pool will not allow the city to, in some instances, where, you know, a company may have to go bankrupt for that, GERMIA will provide support for that. So there's a lot of intangible things that go well beyond just helping our employees, but also helping us overall that it provides, just being a part of a municipal risk management pool. So there is, there are huge things along with the savings, but also just being able to have that information for ourselves as well.
Yeah. That's, that's excellent. That's excellent. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I'd like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday. Dr. Westfield, appreciate that, your report tonight. Thank you. Madam Mayor, that's all I had on Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Westfield, and our city manager for giving us that commentary. It was very good, informative, and helpful with this item. We'll move on to Planning and Development Committee. I'll go back to Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight under Planning and Development.
Yes, sir.
Consider request for plat approval for the purpose of establishing Kensington
Consider a request for a plat approval for the purpose of establishing Kensington Park Phase 2B on approximately 18.67 acres at Leighton Drive in land lots 757, 758, and 810, District 18, Section 2, Parcel 0810, 1820055, Application by DC Kensington Holdings, care of Daniel Fields. Mr. Golden's going to help us with that. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. And congratulations to Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
I'm James Gordon from 6701 Church Street Engineering Department. What we bring before you is a final plat for Kensington Park Phase 2B. This will establish 27 new lots and the existing subdivision, this is toward the backside of that subdivision. And I'm open for any questions. Our engineer could not be here this evening, but I can try and answer any.
Okay. So this is plat, the final plat approval, is that correct, Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, final plat approval, so they'll be looking for building permits.
Yes, okay. Questions, comments? I'm assuming that everything is in order, that
Yes.
of our requirements as far as UDO is concerned, and the builder is ready to go forward, begin building now on these lots. See, this is, is this the last phase of that development?
Yeah, yeah. There's another part of it, but has not been broken into. But yeah, this is the final phase.
Any que, yes, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gordon, I'm looking at paces. Is there another exit, or it's one way in and one way out?
One way out.
What they did was they did at the end of the, this street right here ends the last cross street, Eddington. At the end of that street, there's a cul-de-sac.
Okay.
They had to put in a sewer line at the end of that cul-de-sac, going into an existing subdivision, and that is the emergency exit now, that has already been built, and that will serve as the second emergency exit.
Emergency exit. So is it going into Charlton Crossing, or?
No, 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 no. This is Lee Road. Lee Road and I-20. It's in, it's in My Ward.
Oh, I'm all confused.
Okay. I-20 east to Lee Road, turn right, and go down maybe half a mile, turn right into the subdivision.
Okay.
Summerlin Parkway.
I was thinking of Kensington.
No.
For Presley Mill. Okay.
Oh, okay, okay.
Never mind. Thank you.
Other, other questions, comments, anyone? Okay, you've heard, Mr. Gordon, we, we will place this on the consent agenda for Monday to make sure that the other members of our council are able to ask any questions and be ready to move forward with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. That's all that we have, Madam Mayor, under Planning and Development, and we'll take that up on Monday.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Gordon. I will move on to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening in public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The PR committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee, the vice chair is Councilmember Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in public safety.
Thank you, sir. Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee, that is you as well, Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight. Appoint Ms. Marissa Schaefer-Ward, Restaurant 2, to the City of Douglasville's Convention and Visitors Bureau, CBB Advisory Board, for a two-year term, expiring December 31, 2025, and Ms. Jackson will handle this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Watts. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. As Councilwoman Watts said, Ms. Schaefer-Ward would like to be appointed to the Restaurant 2 position to the CBB Board. It is a two-year commitment, expiring December 31, 2025. Ms. Ward, she works with Hermana's Ice, which started off as a food truck, and now they actually have a restaurant or the store that's on Veterans Memorial Parkway that just opened.
Thank you. Is this the young lady that's like, just graduated from college, in her twenties, has got her own business, or is it getting her confused with someone else?
This is actually, I believe the young lady that you're speaking of, she owns a popcorn shop.
Yes.
But it's also in the downtown area as well.
Okay. But anyway, thank you. And do we have any questions or comments? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. You work so hard to keep these positions filled, and we appreciate all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Do we have any other positions that are available?
Yes, we do.
Per se. Her name is Ruby. I don't think I remember her last name, but it's in the old where Williamson Brothers used to.
Yes, ma'am.
She would love to be a part of.
I have a lot of boards that I could fill her on. I will reach out to her.
Please do. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? I'm going to ask, place this on the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to our deputy city manager, our assistant city manager. We'll move on then to Technology Committee. The vice chair is Councilmember Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight for the Technology Committee.
Thank you, sir. Transportation Committee, Councilmember Miller, would you mind taking that committee for me, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for transportation.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. We're on Item 17, which is other business, and we, our city manager will take both of those other business items. So I'll turn it over to you, City Manager Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. I am going to read into the record for the minutes as the results of the Tuesday, November 7, 2023, City of Douglasville General Elections for the four seats on the city council. And I will start with the mayor for the city of Douglasville. Davich Aaron Caldwell, the first candidate, received 458 votes on Election Day, 148 advanced voting votes, seven absentee votes by mail, and one provisional vote, for a total of 614 votes for 17.63 percent. The next candidate, Mayor Rochelle Robinson, received on Election Day, 1,522 votes, advanced voting, 768 votes, absentee by mail, 37 votes, zero provisional votes, for a total of 2,327 votes and 68, 66.81 percent of the vote. Richard S. Segal, Election Day, 377 votes, advanced voting, 154 votes, absentee by mail, 11 votes, zero provisional, for a total of 543 votes, for a total percentage of 15.56 percent. That is the list for those, for a candidate for mayor. For the council seats, Council Ward Post 2, Ward 2, Post 2, we have three candidates. First candidate, Shay Davis Creel, on Election Day, 166 votes, advanced voting, 75, absentee by mail, three, provisional, zero, for a total of 244 votes, for a total percentage of 31 percent, 31.65 percent. Elena Hudson, Election Day, 267 votes, advanced voting, 147, absentee by mail, 10 votes, provisional, zero, for a total of 424 votes, percentage 54.99 percent. Next candidate, Barney Willis Young Jr., Election Day, 69 votes, advanced voting, 33, absentee by mail, one, provisional, zero, for a total of 103 votes, for a total of 13.36 percent. Next seat, City Council Ward 4, the, there were three candidates. Braxton R., Braxton R. Banks, Election Day, 181 votes, advanced voting, 107, absentee by mail, four votes, total 292 votes, for a total percentage of 27.42 percent. Next candidate, Dominic Hurley, Election Day, 167 votes, advanced voting, 96, absentee by mail, three, provisional, zero, for a total of 266 votes, and a total percentage of 24.98 percent. Next candidate, Chris Coach Watts, the incumbent, Election Day, 349 votes, advanced voting, 148, absentee by mail, 10, provisional, zero, for a total of 507 votes, total percentage 47.61 percent. Next seat, City Council Ward 5, one candidate, the incumbent, Howard M. Estes, Election Day, 315 votes, advanced voting, 134, absentee, three, provisional, zero, for a total of 452, percentage 100 percent. Your candidate winning for mayor, the incumbent, Mayor Rochelle Robinson, Ward 2, Post 2, Elena Hudson. Ward 4, your incumbent, Chris Coach Watts, and Ward 5, your incumbent, Howard M. Estes.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Any questions or comments, Council? Thank you.
Congratulations, Deejay.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Item B.
Item B, this is a request from the Georgia City County Managers Association. They are asking that all local governments and members of the Georgia City County Managers Association, particularly those in the metro area, to support the association hosting the International City County Managers Association Annual Conference for 2028 and 2029. Just to tell you the size of this conference, there's typically, Nashville was about 6,000 city and county managers. So this would be the first time ever that the conference would be hosted in Atlanta. Next year, the conference is in Tampa. So we actually bid against Tampa in 2025 and did not win. So they're hopeful that the metro cities will galvanize and say that, we have a theme, I can't remember what the theme is, but that Atlanta would be a great place, and I can tell you, those who go to this conference, it would be great to have it in Atlanta. So if you all don't mind supporting the association for doing that, that would be excellent. But that would for, be for either 2028 or 2029.
Okay. Thank you. So City Manager, do we sign a resolution or something, or you'll have?
If you all were to adopt the resolution on Monday, we would get a signed copy over to the association, so we can include that in the support letter to the association.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Do we have any other business to come before council tonight from council members? The only thing that I would add to your item A, with the results from the election, I know we had several concerns from citizens. I've received several emails, and from my understanding, there were about 100 calls or so. We have changed, well, not the city, but the Board of Elections, Douglas County Board of Elections has changed the voting precincts. There were typically, and I've been here 28 years, so for the past 24, the city had six precincts, but, and they were in the city limits, but the Board of Elections has opened up to 14 precincts, and so people were confused. And I guess for educational purposes, we'll just have to kind of educate our citizenry that usually, when I lived on the north side, I voted at Golden for municipal elections, and then for national or gubernatorial, I went to Stewart. So the Board of Elections was trying to have citizens go to their same precinct, whether it's municipal or otherwise. So that's why there are 14 precincts. So we did have a concern. We talked to the superintendent, and he says that that is the way it's going to stay from here on out, 14 polling places for city municipal elections, and we just have to educate the citizens. So, yes, sir.
Were we given any notice of that? Did we know about that?
We did know the number of polling places. We presented that to you all. Now, what we weren't prepared for was all the questions. I think there was, one of the points that was made by Mr. Milton Kidd, which I think is a very valid point. You all know the Secretary of State moved the primaries for state elections earlier. So those primaries are earlier, so you had individuals who were campaigning and had signs out earlier. So we think that a lot of the people who went to some of those places in the county thought that they were actually voting for county officials. So it would stand the reason that they thought. So that's something that we are going to be asking our county government to help educate individuals on, that during the municipal election in 2025, that they will not be voting at that time for any county candidates. The other is that, one of the things that was a glitch was the mapping system that the county used. There were some errors in their mapping system. We've already talked to our information technology folks who have indicated, who have basically assured us that we're going to be working on our end to create our own system to allow for residents to go in and log in the system and be able to know where they should vote and how they should vote. The other is, we had a lot of residents, and I think there are newer residents who may not have voted in the last two to three election cycles, because remember, you all have had an election cycle where you ran unopposed. We think those citizens did not realize that they actually lived in the county. So we're going to do some information in advance, even before qualifying, of encouraging residents to please verify where you live, which district you live in, which ward you live in. So the other thing I would add is that there are a couple clips that were provided by Mr. Kidd in particular. One is the city of Milton. They did take over their elections from Fulton County. I would not recommend that for us, for a multitude of reasons. So I, I think at best, what we can do over the next essentially 18 months or so is, is work very closely with the election superintendent, do some education on our end between information technologies and community relations, so we can provide a better, just a better process overall. But a lot of it is educating residents where they live, and educating residents that despite the fact that the county is advertising for candidates, that it's not quite time yet for them to vote. So Joel, you lean forward. Did you have something to add?
Some of the confusion arises in the fact that some municipal candidates place signs far outside the city limits. There were, there were campaign signs on North Midwood May Road.
That's true. There were. So the candidates need to be educated as well. I mean, I know that our city clerk did give us, now that was the first time I was aware that we were going to have 14 polling places is when we qualified in August. So we weren't made aware until that time, but we did know from August until the November election that there were going to be 14 polling places. But again, those candidates have to make themselves educated as well to know where the, the city limits are and not put signs, you know, outside of the city limits.
We, we will do that in advance, Mayor, because actually, when we signed that contract with Douglas County, those polling places are listed.
Yes, ma'am.
So you all have it, but it's done well before qualifying. So you all, and it's posted on our website. Ms. Vicki said that's in February. So what we'll do, February of 2025, is we'll make certain to let you all know, to remind you all, these are the polling places. They're listed on the website because they're done so far in advance before you all qualify, that there won't be, that there won't be as much confusion. But we did have a lot of phone calls and a lot of confusion.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you so much. So that was the only other business that I had to bring forward, and I hadn't, I didn't see anything else from council members. Updates from city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dodson.
No business, Madam.
Thank you, sir. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
Hello.
Yes, you're welcome. Our chief of police, Chief, Dr. Gary Sparks. It was great going with the chief to the barber shop, D1 Barber Shop, I think it was. He started his chat with the chief series again, and it was great to go there and meet the new business in the community, and they love Chief Sparks. Go on, Chief, you have anything.
We have a toy drive starting up, so we're dropping toys, O S P, or we have some other places that helping us out with the toy drive.
Mm-hmm.
So we got that going on. There's a community dinner, November the 18th, it's this Saturday at 5:00. We partnered with this church and provided some turkeys. So it's free meal. That's at 7870 Smith Road. It's New Mountain Top Church. You go out there and they're going to have a program. You know, we've been putting information out to the apartment complexes that we've been working with, trying to get people to go out there and get something to eat. And then Saturday, we start off, we used to get violence program.
Okay. Thank you so much, Chief. Now, how long is the toy drive going to take place?
Up until, I guess, a week before Christmas. So we trying to get everything. There's a box in City Hall.
Okay, so City Hall.
Everybody, City Hall.
Hunter Park, different places.
Put a toy there.
Yes, sir.
And so we'll go up into like a week before the Christmas holidays.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you so much. We have, are we going to have the box, the mailbox again for Santa, for kids to put there? Are we going to have the box, the mailbox again for Santa, for kids to put their wish list in, so we'll know what to give them? I see we're shaking heads, so then we'll know what toys to give to what kids based on Santa's wish list. Thank you so much, chief. Our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
No, ma'am, I don't have anything.
Thank you so much. Comments from citizens and delegates, if you sustain the meeting, you'd like to come and address us, please come forward. You have five minutes to talk to us about business related to the city.
Cindy Welch, 3002 Concord Way, Douglasville. I'm only here because I think there's something that's not safe going on. At the corner of Fairburn Road and Durley Lane, there used to be a sign that said, "No trucks." Well, that sign is gone, and I don't know if the gas station who was there building, if they took it down, but Durley Lane has more 18-wheelers going up that street than you can imagine. And when they get up to Veterans Memorial, Bankhead Highway, they have to stop. And a lot of times, there's so much traffic, they can't make a left turn, they can't make a right turn, traffic gets backed all the way down on Durley, and then right there, if you would make a left turn onto Fairburn, there's an area between where Trey Robinson was building something and the road, 18-wheelers park there. So when you're coming up, you cannot see to the west to pull out. So I don't know if the sign there would mean anything, but it's not there anymore, and it's, it is really getting to be unsafe.
Thank you so much, chief, and we'll look into, the sign is maybe during construction or something, those signs are gone, and at the other end of Veterans Memorial Highway, I believe that the, it isn't the developer, it's the owner who, where that is not continuing to develop, it's not the Mr. Robinson's. Did you get those sites, chief?
Fairburn Road, Durley, and going up to Veterans Memorial. I travel that road a lot because I eat breakfast over there at the.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Welch.
Yeah.
Bankhead, any other comments from citizens and delegates? We don't have anything else, then this meeting is adjourned.